We didn't have to do that. We have a call made for this council meeting in the city of Port Angeles at this service after 6:00 PM tonight. We'll begin proceedings with a phone call.
Mayor Downey?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Present.
Councilmember Collins?
Here.
Councilmember Gates?
Present.
Councilmember Meredith?
Here.
Councilmember Witten?
Here.
Axum City Manager West?
Present.
Attorney Lawrence?
Here.
I've invited Councilmember Lee Man to the DRS President's office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, just to note the following ceremonial matters and proclamations. Those of you who have, who do follow the agenda printed in, you know, printed and pick it up at the desk here in the office or probably if they've seen it on the website, I just want to advise you that there will be a number of ceremonial matters and proclamations that are not listed on our agenda this evening. And for those of you who are good for the special treat, I've been looking forward to this one. Maybe not as much as those in retirement, but we're pleased that you're here to celebrate with some folks that have been serving the city for a very long time. So with that said, I'm going to begin this with the proclamation that's been prepared to recognize Billy Frank Junior Day and ask if Michael Peters, who's the executive director of the Oregon, Michael, would please join me up here from the desk. I've invited, can you hear me? I've invited Michael to join me here. Michael's the executive director of the Lower Elbow Tribe Nation here and thank you for being here. Thank you. So, this is a proclamation in recognition of Billy Frank Junior Day. Whereas as celebration of Billy Frank Junior's legacy and in recognition of his tireless dedication to the rights of the native people of Washington, we wish to honor him as one of the great stewards of the land. And whereas he fought for treaty rights to fish the waters of the Pacific Northwest about defining one in 1974 to save the salmon that had fed his family for generations. And whereas today, thanks to his courage and determined effort, our resources are better protected and more tribes are able to enjoy the rice preserved for them more than a century ago. And whereas Billy Frank Junior never stopped fighting to make sure future generations would be able to enjoy the outdoors as he did and his passion on the issues of climate change. And whereas he believed that if fish can't live, neither can weed, and he dedicated himself to everyone's children, not just his own. And whereas Billy Frank Junior was an honored elder and an Isqali tribal member and was chairman of the Northwest Indian Fisheries Commission for over 30 years. And whereas the recognitions he received include the Presidential Medal of Freedom posthonestly for President Obama and the Albert Swanson Prize for Humanitarianism, therefore I, Patrick Downey, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby recognize March 9th as Billy Frank Junior Day in honor of an internationally known native leader and Isqali tribal elder. They will look with great admiration to inspiring individuals like Billy Frank Junior and follow the past for the sake of our future.
Thank you, Mayor Downey and the City Council for recognizing Billy Frank Junior Day and his great accomplishments. I accept the proclamation not just because of his tireless dedication to the rights of native people, but also for his commitment to the environment. I accept this for his never-ending fight to make sure future generations would be happy and enjoy the outdoors. My hope is that the city understands that Billy worked for all of us. Let's together take this proclamation in the spirit of Billy to accomplish that lasting environmental legacy for the city of Port Angeles. Thank you very much.
May I invite Phil Strachan to come forward and join me? I've had the pleasure of, I've had the pleasure of the last several days and it's, it's it's sad because I've lost a friend. But we are, I think I gave you this exchange. I'm here to, we're here today to present a proclamation which Corey has already tried to read in just a moment. A good friend and a great friend of the city. It's a proclamation in recognition of Mr. Father Strachan and Strachan family, which his son here says exciting. It is as follows. Whereas on February 20th, 2016, the community lost a leader, an advocate for the Port Angeles community, an volunteer who served in multiple factions for more than 10 years. That community leader was Mr. Father Strachan. And whereas Father Strachan was born in Portchester, New York on June 22nd, 1941. He attended Bucknell University and graduated from the University of Duke in Iowa with a national degree in business. His business career was in advertising sales with DuPont, Good Housekeeping Magazine, and Blair and Ketchum's County Journal. In 1975, Father relocated to Cold Spring, Texas to own and operate a cell phone brand on Lake Livingston. Father enjoyed saving throughout his life. In 1992, he married his wife Julia, who passed away in 2015, and her own right, a great volunteer. And whereas Father Strachan and his lovely bride Julia moved to Port Angeles in 2005. Although Father was an odd at Port Angeles native, he embraced his community and gave his countless hours volunteering because he loved Port Angeles and everything it represents. And as much as he loved Port Angeles, Port Angeles and everybody who came in contact with him loved him back. And whereas Father Strachan served the city of Port Angeles by sitting on the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission for eight years, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for three years, and on the Board of Directors for the Port Angeles Fine Arts Center. And whereas Father Strachan also volunteered and served in many other ways. He was president of the Fringe of the Library, supported the Port Angeles Symphony Orchestra, active at the Port Angeles Senior Center. He was instrumental in getting the pickleball course developed at Elks Play Field. And whereas on the pickleball court, Father served was legendary. And whereas to honor Father's commitment to volunteerism, his advocacy on the Port Angeles area and all of the need for this community, the City of Port Angeles would like to recognize Mr. Father Strachan for all of his achievements. Now therefore, I, Patrick Downey, here and on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission, do hereby honor and celebrate the life of Mr. Father Strachan and thank his family as a testament to the city of Port Angeles.
Thank you very much. Father deserved that. He was a great commissioner, he was a great volunteer, he was a great friend. He is going to be this. And trust me when I say, he grew up in Port Angeles and everything about it's him and I'm the witness.
Thank you all so much, my dad and my stepmom Julia. I spent the very best years of our lives in Port Angeles and that is priceless. And for that, I'm so grateful to all of you.
I'd like to invite our first Chief Attorney Gallagher to join me here. Nathan, we have another special moment. I'll let Nathan hold that for just a moment. I've asked Terry to join me with Nathan as we honor someone else who's in the audience. Some of them hiding, both my eye and my wife, I've known for years. Would Liz, is that on your name? I'm going to take a couple of moments here, but I have to turn the box to Terry. It's going to be a little harder than it might appear.
You have no idea.
You're not the only person who can share Terry. I'm lucky to be seen. Please forgive me for a personal moment. I first came in contact with Liz because of her great work given promptly to this group with the Operation Uplift. Came in contact with her because of her association with my wife, who back in the late nineties, when diagnosed with breast cancer, has now been a hundred years survivor. And so initially, I wanted her work and I wanted to talk about her professional life and association together. I just want you to know that she's a great volunteer too. And she was instrumental in my wife's survival. I haven't talked too much about this, so it's very important. But I have some issues clear about this, so I don't know. I suppose it's too big for some. But I know how valuable Operation Uplift is and how important it is for those of you, even some of you today, are working with people who are working dealing with cancer. We need to have had people like Liz who are there to receive the phone call, to be prepared to be helpful, to understand what is involved with issues associated with cancer or any other health. Liz, I deeply appreciate all that you've done on behalf of women and men of this community who have dealt with and are dealing with cancer. You are a really great woman for that.
So there's lots of things about Liz you need to know. Liz, years ago, ran a fishing boat out of Native Bay. Liz is a licensed pilot. She's just a remarkable woman. And I can just tell you that people like me, if we have any claim to have been successful in our careers, it's because of people like Liz. Liz has worked at the police department longer than I have. I've been here 34 years. Liz has been here 33. And every step of the way, Liz has done everything humanly possible to make sure not only I was successful, but all the other people that you see standing in this room. Years ago, Liz was our record supervisor. Well, even back even further, years ago, Liz dispatched when we were in the police department in front of the day became a River Water girl. She went, back then, people would dispatch, they would write records. We would bring guys out of the bars downtown, back when logging was king and fishing was king and there were heck of a lot more bars. And Liz would have to fingerprint these people before we threw them in the drogue tank. It was a whole different environment than you have today, not the police department or even the law enforcement. So Liz can tell stories, she knows where the bodies were buried. So she wasn't all that. She was with us when we moved from downtown to where we currently are as a records clerk, later a record specialist, later a record supervisor. And then later, Liz chose to retire from that position and at Shopee, as a police sergeant, was transferred to the record supervisor position. We kept Liz on in a part-time basis because frankly, there's no way a police patrol sergeant could be successful as a record supervisor had Liz not agreed to stick around and provide, add the institutional knowledge and the training needed to later become successful in that position. Liz is the heart and soul of the police department. This always happens. You know, I just love her to death. We decided a couple of years ago that on Friday, which is my last day and will be her last day as well, we were gonna hold hands and cartwheel through the apartment ladder. It's an A tag that recognizes her service as the record supervisor. This is the police department patch from 1915 until, I can't remember exactly, 2005 or so. This is the new patch. And this is the badge. Back in the day, everybody in the police department, regardless of position, was commissioned in some fashion. And so at one time, even the records clerks wore badges. So it could slap you around if it was necessary. So that's to recognize Liz. To recognize Liz is 33 years of service in the city of Port Angeles and the Port Angeles Police Department.
I really appreciate this. The police department has been for me my family, my friends, and I can't thank you enough for all your support. I love you all.
Now you're back here to come join us here. I'm going to turn this sometime over to Nathan first. This is a bit of a surprise, I think.
Yeah, it's a bit of a surprise.
I just realized that while both the gentlemen standing here together, why maybe tears come to my eyes quickly too, is while we're not technically Irish, I was born, that's because of his name for the hindrance. So it's that, not certain thing.
Thank you, Mayor Downey. I just want to mention that working with Terry Gallagher has certainly been a privilege and it's especially a privilege to be able to stand out here this evening on behalf of Dan McKean. I do want to mention that I know no one else who is more devoted to the Port Angeles community, who has dedicated more hours in ensuring peace within this community. And I think it's just so commendable what Terry Gallagher has done to also set the bar for city leadership, to set a positive tone for leadership, to set a high bar for ethical standards, and to set a high bar for integrity throughout the city. And Terry Gallagher has done just that. I think one of the things that Dan McKean would very much like me to share is first, he would like to be here more than anything. And he greatly regrets that he's not able to be here this evening. He apologizes for that. He had a specific appointment that he could not reschedule and unfortunately was not able to make it. But let me tell you why it's so important that Dan McKean would have liked to be here. And specifically, Dan would tell you that he never would have taken the city manager position were it not for the opportunity for he is fire chief to become the boss of the police. Dan shares with me and shares with everyone. That is the reason why he wanted the city manager position. And for that reason, I think now would be a good time to pass the microphone over to Ken Deview, our fire chief.
Thank you very much. It's a tremendous honor to be here to recognize folks like Liz and Terry who started their careers before I was even born. So we were over at the fire station and we're kind of cleaning up and there was a bunch of stuff hanging around and we realized that we'd have to pay it. We took it to the dump, so we gave it to Terry. So just in honor of his retirement. So first of all, you may not know it, but Terry's going on a cruise right after his retire. So we got him some really nice luggage. And there's cookies and there's treats to pay, but they're still warm. We couldn't find, we couldn't find a happy retirement bill, but we found a happy birthday one that was on sale. You know that firefighters love cops. We also know that all cops want to be firefighters. So we either there for, is he needed in the future? We're very concerned about his nutrition. He's going to be on retirement, mixed income. So we got him some food to get him through the first week of retirement. We also know that since Terry's more longer going to be carrying a badge and be an official cop, can't carry a gun anymore, really is. But so we got him the next generation taser. There's a slip shot with a nine volt battery. So maybe that they'll be well armed and able to take care of bad people. So there's your taser. And then all of us at the fire department today dug deep. Everybody chipped in. Everybody collected as much as they felt they could possibly afford. And then I chipped in the rest and we got Terry a $2 lottery ticket. It'll be okay for, you know, his financial needs, so they do that. And last but not least, in all seriousness, I really, I think the world of Terry. I know there were many phone calls exchanged between us when I was the new chief and he'd been a chief for a long time. It almost said that it was sobbing and all, you know, some pretty heartfelt conversations that occurred during the years. So I really do thank you for everything you've done for me. And in recognition, I'm going to give Terry something that I know is a treasure. It's a brandish of me. I'm not sure if I have a hold. Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing.
And I'm going to invite Sheriff Phil Pender to join us up here. Terry has always been a great collaborator. He's always been willing. And Phil, heard from the proclamation a little earlier in Charlotte. Many of the ladies, they've worked together, Phil.
Mayor, how in the, do I follow in that? This is, this is going to be tough. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, it's all in Terry's virtues, there's plenty of time for that. But suffice it to say that Terry is, is among the finest police officers and the finest police chief I've ever had the privilege of serving with. So with that, I need to tell you that Terry actually started his law enforcement career as a deputy sheriff. And wound up, Phil will explain it to you, he wound up in the Port Angeles Police Department. In recognition of that, it's a circle, it's come all the way around. We are now awarding you the highest award of the sheriff's office, the sheriff's star. I'd like to read the citation. "The Collin County Sheriff's Office presents the sheriff's star to Terry Gallagher, Port Angeles Police Chief. The Collin County Sheriff's Office is proud to recognize Port Angeles Chief of Police Terry Gallagher for over 30 years of dedicated and principled law enforcement to the citizens of Port Angeles and Collin County. Chief Gallagher worked his way through the ranks from patrol officer, patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, deputy chief, and finally chief of police, all at the Port Angeles Police Department. As chief, he has been instrumental in forging an effective partnership among all the state, federal, and local law enforcement agencies on the great peninsula. I can't highlight that enough. Terry has just been an awesome partner in law enforcement on the peninsula. The Collin County Sheriff's Office has directly benefited from his cooperative leadership and vision in running an outstanding law enforcement agency as well as directing what is probably the finest dispatch center in the state of Washington. On behalf of a grateful community of citizens and law enforcement professionals, the Collin County Sheriff awards the sheriff's star to retiring chief of police Terry Gallagher."
Some of you have heard me say this before. When you were with my parents, this is quite cool. I mentioned earlier, we have a proclamation, which I'm going to read, which is going to be presented to Terry in just a moment. And I want you to listen very carefully and hopefully not miss anything here. This kind of summarizes Terry's argument. It's a proclamation in recognition of the public service of the public service of Terry Gallagher. Whereas Police Chief Terry Gallagher began his law enforcement career Whereas Police Chief Terry Gallagher began his law enforcement career in 1985, he joined the Port Angeles Police Department, soon after serving as the city's first drug and alcohol resistance education, i.e. dare officer. And as a dare officer, Terry's devotion to the youth of the community began and has continued to this day. Throughout his career, he has supported innovative and best practice programs, including the school resource officer, the downtown resource officer, the Olympic, the drug force, drug task force, and the police canine programs. And whereas, whereas his dedication to public safety extended into neighboring communities as he pursued uniting efforts through the initiatives of regionalization in order to merge the administration and operations of two large and complex 9/11 dispatch centers. And whereas Chief Gallagher understood the current fiscal crisis and the negative impact this has had on his department's resources, and proactively left the issues at arm's length. In securing outside funding and by trimming costs, Chief Gallagher was able to maintain the fundamental necessities that were critical to maintaining a high level of public service in this community. And whereas, through his commitment to high educational standards, Chief Gallagher has emphasized the importance of continuing education to improve the individual skills and maintain a department that applies the best and most suited for the job at hand, people who are, and people who are always striving to be the best that they can be. And whereas the Chief Gallagher sought out new technology in order to maintain the high standards, his department deployed a vast array of new equipment and software to improve performance, and above all, to provide excellent public safety. Projects included new world records, mobile data, and computer aided dispatch technology, and a waterfront camera project. Now therefore, I Patrick Kelly, mayor, on behalf of the city council of Port Angeles and Dan McKean, city manager, on behalf of the city staff, with great appreciation, great appreciation for the service to the community I do hereby approve the retired Terry Gallagher. That's not even true. If I was on my way, you'd still be around. His public service, his dedication to his position as chief, in a quick wit will be greatly missed by all. May others be blessed by your humorous spirit from this day forth, and may we never leave your name in headline CNN.
I just want to say thank you very much. This community's been very good to me. This is my wife, Tammy. She's helped me in my job for over thirty years. She made that quilt for me that she's hanging over there. I don't know how she managed that, because we live in the same house, and I've never seen her before. Some of those young guys who were there, I used to be their dare officer, so I guess something can be said for the dare program, at least in that respect. I just would like to remind you all what a wonderful community that you live in, because it's my impression that oftentimes some of you forget that. This is a wonderful place to live, that we have far more to be proud of than we have to be angry about, and I hope that as we move forward, we all try to remember that. Thank you so much for thirty-one wonderful years.
You better share.
And we're gonna take about ten minutes right here, that is for a very special purpose. We'll reconvene our meeting at about 6:45, and this morning we will be here at public hearing, excuse me, public comment hearing for fifteen is probably that. But, so that you might have the opportunity to do your thanks to, to Terry and Liz, who are retiring as well, and to enjoy something that I once ordered once. You know, it seems like the act of founding is a cookie monster, and that's Terry. And so we have brought for his enjoyment and for yours, without any thought for you that there's lots of cookies. And so we would like you to join the staff, the council, as we congratulate and commend him for his service and for the assistance as well, and have an opportunity to still care members of the father's strapping family, and those of you who are known to have been exposed. So please join us for five, ten minutes or so in the recording. We'll reconvene in the city council meeting, the march troops. If I can invite those, someone to, I'm not tempted to roll the roller doors, but I don't mind if there's two somebody that may be more comfortable sitting in those chairs, but I also don't want to stop the friendships and conversations, so.
Yeah, I think it might actually make sense, there's lots of space up here in the front.
No, I really would like to invite those who want to participate in the city council meeting proceedings, please to join us in the council chambers by the house signs, please.
I heard you have one of the signs to come on in and we'll talk about it.
That's my way of making it. Can you, those in the back, can hear me okay?
Barely.
Barely?
Yes.
So we're gonna have to roll the roller doors down just so that we can have some corner here. Please join us in the council chambers, where the crowd can separate out the back of the road, and we'll put the roller doors up again. We hope that each of you who are here enjoyed the preceding time. That was a highlight for me, and all the special for the families to have this moment to share with their loved ones and, those that have recently passed. So we are about, we'll be at about 6:51 here in just a moment, so before you begin, rejoin the meeting with public comment, I have seen on Janet, Jen, and before we did it, just let me go through briefly some, what we talked about last time we met. This is Terry's first public comment hearing in the last fifteen minutes, and that was approximately twelve, probably about twelve after seven. We'll allow each of you that wish to speak, we'll be coming forward in three minutes. I've invited Jennifer, our city clerk, to monitor that time so each of us, including myself, can focus exclusively on your comments. I don't have to be looking up at the clock or the watch or whatever, I just feel that you know that I and the rest of us are gonna focus on you, and we'll provide you three minutes, at which point Jennifer will note that, and in that case, we'll ask you to very quickly summarize your remarks and provide a fair amount of time for those that follow you.
Mr. Mayor, I rise to a point of information that will be provided by Mr. Bor. Mr. Bor, we have notified the public that we are bound by council rules of procedure. Can you tell me that we are bound by rules of procedure as the mayor stated?
I'm not sure what you're asking, but under state law, each city council can establish its own procedure, so there is no formal set of rules like Robert's rule of order that a city is required to follow, councils can adopt their own rules, and courts like any council requires a majority of the council to adopt the rules. In Port Angeles, the city council has adopted some rules of procedure, in some regards they are pretty detailed, in other regards, they're pretty flexible.
Specifically, I'm referring to council rules of procedure that's adopted, to my understanding, by Port Angeles City Council, is that correct?
Maybe I'm not understanding your question, but you are correct that the city council has adopted rule of procedure in Port Angeles.
Thank you. For the record, that council rules of procedure do apply to all undertakings of this council. Thank you, Mr. Bor.
I was brought to my attention that one of the individuals on the, this evening joining us is a young lady by the name of Laurel Harjes, Harjes. She is a young lady of...
Mr. Mayor, I may have, I may have marched a wrong name, so if the young lady sits right here, should come up to the podium.
What is your name, I'm ready? Okay, I'm sorry, I, I was wrong, I was wrong, lost, forgive me. I'm gonna invite Urban to join us, it's a rare treat that we have one of our younger citizens join us, and she has something she'd like to share with us this evening. This is your father standing next to you. Thank you for being with us today. You'll be our first public comment. And you need to share your name and your address.
You could do it.
You'll do good.
Yeah, Michaela.
Are you sure? Well, I will relay Michaela's message. My name is Joe Urban, I reside at 316 East Sixth Street, and I'm very proud of Michaela's idea. A few weeks ago, we were walking through Waterfront Park, and the grass had recently been put down, and we were just very excited about it, thought, what a great place to have, for families and friends to play. And Michaela started running along the beach and just said, "I love this place, and I really would like to see if we can have a merry-go-round there with a food snack and refreshments out there for festivals and families to get together in the summertime." And I just asked her if she wanted to say something to the council about that, because I really felt that that's a good thing for all of us to be talking about, and I'm very proud of her, so thank you.
Well, Michaela, can you hear me okay? As, as your friend and as the mayor, I want you, I don't know, we don't necessarily try to do this, but this is a special occasion, I want you to know, I share your dream, I see a playground, I see a merry-go-round out there. There's a great city park in Connecticut that I've visited several times. The maker of that playground, the merry-go-round, the animals go around and around, it is a poor town, so maybe we'll join together on that merry-go-round, and then sometime in your future, and I, I hope so. Thank you for coming today. So, our first public comment in this first public hearing is Janet Kamen. And Janet, so that we can be fair about this, I'm gonna, we're gonna start the clock right now, for ten, for fifteen minutes.
Janet Kamen.
That is the most.
Janet Kamen, 2902 South Regent Street, speaking on behalf of our Water Our Choice. Tonight's agenda places new restrictions on public comment. A limitation on speech to three minutes per person is not new, but now you place a limit on the total public comment time, now limited to fifteen minutes for both the early and the late public comment periods. Only five citizens can be accommodated in each segment, far fewer than feel the need to express their concerns. Some restriction of the early period could be justified because the council must do city business, but restriction of the later session is not reasonable, it appears to be purely punitive. There was no public process in making this change, nor did there need to be, thanks to the status of code city under RCW 35A. That form of government awards the city all possible powers. The mayor can limit comment, citizens may request but may not demand to be heard. Changing the government back to the form that was enjoyed by Port Angeles for decades prior to 1971 will give citizens more right to be heard and more oversight of expenditures. The current form of government has brought us a debt of more than $150 million, forced medication, a refusal to honor democratic processes, and now a denial of free speech. It's time for a change, a big change. Thank you.
Robert Sean Flood. Please against each your name, your address, please.
Robert Sean Flood, Viewist Park. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I wish to take a moment to remember Fowler Stratt, a truly great man and an incredible asset to the entire Port Angeles community. Fowler made those around him better people, and we are all recipients of his great gifts. He will be missed. On February 2nd, the freedom of speech was shut down a pounding of a gavel. I echo former Supreme Court Justice Hugo Black, whom in 1962 stated, "My view is without deviation, without exception, without any ifs, buts, or whereas's, that the freedom of speech means..." speech means that you shall not do something to the people either for the work of views they express, or the words they speak, or write." Public sentiment, Lincoln said, is everything. With it, nothing can fail; without it, nothing can succeed. One only need to look at all the yellow signs to see where the public sentiment lies. Thomas Jefferson said that men, by their own constitutions, are naturally divided into two parties, those who fear and distrust the people, and those who identify themselves with the people, have confidence in them, cherish and consider them as the most honest and safe. Those who fear and distrust the people will first ignore us, then they will laugh at us, then they will fight us, then we win. Some of you said at the last meeting that the ad hoc committee could move forward, but they would not agree with any decision that would remove fluoride. Is this committee yet another waste of the people's time and money? Is it pure lip service? Heed Edmund Burke's warning. Reflect how you are to govern a people who think they ought to be free and think that they are not. Your scheme yields nothing but discontent, disorder, and disobedience. Thank you.
Next is Patricia.
Graham.
Graham, yes, that's what I was going to say, actually.
Can I have an egg timer that is three minutes? My name is Patricia Graham, I live at 1503 East Third Street, Port Angeles. And here's my egg timer, and I certainly hope I'm not interrupting, thank you. I will not get into the health issues on what is being put in our water, that has been deep into the ground. What I will talk about is my rights as a citizen of Port Angeles. I know there are ways for people to get fluoride if they want it. Also, good dental hygiene can be taught in schools and in the dental office, as well as parents. In order for those that don't want it, it is costly and involves a plumber putting a reverse osmosis system, or using a water distiller, or buying your water. This still doesn't take the fluorosilic acid for the whole house, it's out for the whole house. It only provides enough pure water to cook and drink. Over half of the advisory survey voted they did not want fluorosilic acid in their water. Now we get to my rights. Why am I being forced to have this in my water that I pay for? I don't want it. This is not fair to force this against my will and more than half the people of Port Angeles. This not only is unethical, it's criminal to force someone to have something against their will, his or her will. By this action of the four city councilmen, you have lost the respect of over half the citizens of Port Angeles. You have divided the city and its citizens. I want my rights as a human being. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Good evening, my name's Greg Royatt, 1111 Columbia Street, Port Angeles. Just wanted to make a few general statements here, just to kind of clarify the overall atmosphere of the community right now. In Port Angeles, we face many concerns as a community, be it drugs, poverty, financial shortfalls, or infrastructures. There are many problems to be addressed in this community. We have witnessed numerous community groups beginning to come together, and I know of two groups this last weekend that came together to participate in cleanup of the, you know, of different parks in the, in the community. You know, there's numerous other events going on that, you know, many of these in the room probably are involved in right now. And I know that some of the council members were involved in those, you know, that renewal this, this last weekend as well. We need to have more of this type of community cooperation. The cooperative, or the diverse, the diverseness that I've seen in this, in this community recently, and the divisiveness is, is, just, it's almost beyond words, really. I hope that we can start to come together and begin to not cause harm to this community, but begin to pull things together. Thank you for, for your leadership in this, in this event, and I hope to see that we're to bring things together. Thank you.
Linda Crane.
I don't have an egg timer. Council members Collins, Downey, Gase, and Kidd, I'm going to read the words that city council members speak as they are sworn into office following election by the voters of Port Angeles, or by appointment to office without a vote of the people. I, your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Washington, and the ordinances of the city of Port Angeles, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of city of Port Angeles, council position, whatever, according to the law to the best of my ability. And then you put your signature on that, and the plate. This is the oath you took, and then broke, like many council members before you, when you did not support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the Washington State. Our Constitution was painstakingly composed by our forefathers to reflect and protect the liberties with which each person is born. As the authors put it, it was written in part, "to secure the blessings of liberty." When you usurp our individual rights, such as our ownership of our bodies and our right to medicate our bodies as each sees fit, it is a violation of the supreme law of the land, as well as the betrayal of the people who observed your oath of office. Even if a vast majority of voters had pressured you to put some medication in their public water system, a majority vote would not authorize you to infringe on individual rights. No person or group has authority to give you authority to despise someone else's individual natural rights. At a council hearing earlier in the winter, a young mother put it very well, she said, "Democracy is two wolves and a lamb deciding what to have for lunch." She gets it. You chose to go outside of your duties to the people, you who chose to fluoridate our water. You ignored your oaths, ignored the law of the land, and deemed yourselves authorized to treat our bodies with unmeasured doses of fluoride, along with arsenic and lead. You betrayed us, you proved yourselves untrustworthy, and it's time for you to step down from your positions. Your continued disrespect toward the people who have talked to you clearly about this breach of trust simply confirms this. RC Div 42 states, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them." This doesn't prefer just open meetings. United States Code 42 says, "Every person, every person who undercolor of any statute, ordinance, regulation, customer usage of any state, subjects or causes to be subjected, any person within the jurisdiction thereof to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured by the Constitution and laws, shall be liable to the party injured in an action of law." This is the law.
I'm a registered nurse, and I do not endorse water fluoridation. I want to point out that when we go to a doctor or hospital, we have the right to consent to treatment, and the reason for this right is to protect the most basic and fundamental of human rights, which is the right to be free of violation against our bodies. It is understood by all in a free and civil society that the sovereignty of a person's body is saparcentum. In my 20 years as an RN, I never performed a procedure on a patient without their consent, or coerced any patient to comply with a treatment that they did not want regardless of benefit, provided that they were a capable adult. Fluoridation of the municipal water supply effectively amounts to compulsory mandatory treatment. So I am at a loss as to why. The medical and dental community has set aside their moral compass and professional ethic when it comes to the issue of forced fluoride treatment. They justify it in the name of public health, and say that public health concerns true of the will of the people. But fluoride treatment can be provided to those who want it for themselves or their children without forcing it on everyone. I say, "The emperor has no clothes." And I say to the medical dental community, "The emperor," that you especially should know better. To the city council, I say, "The reason for such fervent opposition from so many is that we feel our bodies are being subjected to both violation and harm." Who wouldn't fight that? It is a natural reaction. To the citizens in favor, I say, "Ending fluoridation would not infringe on our rights. You are free to obtain it and put it in your own or your children's water. For you, discontinuation would merely be a matter of minor inconvenience." To all those who are concerned for disadvantaged children, I say, "Though inconvenient, you can resolve to work together to develop and implement a strategy for distribution to them as well." In conclusion, proponents do not have to agree with opponents who believe that fluoridation is harmful. There are expert claims for both sides, but the one aspect that is not debatable is the issue of consent to treatment. Convenience does not trump liberty and the sovereignty of one's own body. Thank you.
Hi, my calculations, and I know there may be an exception to that lovely young lady. I'm concluding, it will be Steve Harjes, and then we'll be Jenny.
I'm calling my wife, I'm mad.
Well, I'm doing that because you guys have to go home, you guys.
Stephen Harjes, 3755 Canyon Circle, Port Angeles, Washington. The council's decision to continue water fluoridation is not just about the water we drink. In my case, I don't drink it, but also the water we use for bathing, gardening, cooking, washing, vegetables, swimming, etc. My wife and I have completely eliminated baths. We have limited our showerings to quick showers twice a week. We've quit our membership at the pool, the local pool, which we love, loved so much. And the reason for these things is because we don't want to marinate our bodies in fluoride. We love to have organic, organic garden, but by definition, this is impossible due to the fluoride. We use bottled water while we're drinking, cooking, and for washing our locally bought organic produce from the local market. Buying water is only a partial fix, but I'm forced to do it, forced. I purchase a minimum of four, two and a half gallon containers of water a week from Hagen, $2.50, or a bottle, $40 to $60 a month. That's if we're not drinking pasta and stuff, then it's quite a bit more. Many times our shelves have been out, and we have to go without water. Sometimes I run the Safeway, make an additional trip. I thought of collecting rainwater outside and plumbing it into the house, but unfeasible. I thought about building a well in the backyard, unfeasible, expensive, and I don't even think the city council would allow it. Filters are not an option, it would cost thousands of dollars to filter a house reverse osmosis. How much water does the actual community actually drink? If you think about washing your car, clothes, yourself, dishes, flushing the toilet, watering the lawn, fire department, golf courses, the 5-10% of the water actually gets drank? Just a guess. This seems like the worst example of distributing medication I've ever heard. If our health professionals are so committed to the public health and let them write prescriptions for those that want fluoride in their water, person can then add their own fluoride to their water, they could have a choice, and 0% of the fluoride would go down the toilet. Right now, I have no choice, and all my household city water does go down the toilet. When I was a child, dentists used to come to our school and provide fluoride treatments. Of course, I had to get a permission slip, I had to take it home, I had to get my mother's consent for the fluoride treatment, and they never worked. While serving in the military and stationed in California, they attempted to try to put fluoride in the water on the base because there was hundreds of people that had houses on the base. After two months, they discontinued because of all of the corrosion destroyed the pumps that distributed the water. Not sure if there's anything that you add to the water here so it doesn't corrode, because fluoride does corrode.
Three minutes.
Please don't turn, Port Angeles, since I'm from Michigan, it's horrible. With more than 30 years of military service, hundreds of hours of F-extraining, there's one phrase I will never forget, and I always use it as my moral compass, "If something can even appear to be unethical, you must consider it unethical." These words still guide me. While adding medication to our public water system against the will of most of the community is not too unethical, I'm at a loss. Water is one of our most sacred rights, we cannot live without water. Please, please, I beg you, do not add a substance to our water system that, quite frankly, we really don't know all of the effects on our human bodies and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you for those of you who are paying attention. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I came here too late to sign, could I have 30 seconds, just 30 seconds? I didn't get a chance to sign the list because I... It'll be a second public comment period, we do not have a lengthy agenda tonight. It'll be a second public comment period, judging by the lengths that remain asserted. We stand that opportunity to you again. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I rise to a point of information, following public comment.
Yes.
Thank you for recognizing me. I think it's very important that people do get a chance to weigh in, give us your opinion. I just want it to be known that this is not a council decision, this is a mayor's decision. So, take it for what it is, we've not discussed this as a council, this is not council action. He has the power, the deputy mayor, whenever, when she's running the, the meeting, she has the power, according to Mr. Bor. So, again, this is not a council, more of an individual thing, so I don't support it, I'd much rather listen to my constituents than put me in office.
Thank you. We're at I and D on our late items, to be precise, on Mr. Future's agenda, is the, the...
Mr. Mayor, that has no additional weight items, other than the two proclamations that were added to the I and D.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we had talked about getting a conversation happening about the rules of procedure for the council, and I would...
and I would like to see that happen at the next council meeting if this is at all possible.
Mr. Mayor, we'll need a consensus of council if that is council's desire.
I'd like to actually support that as well as the sign discussion.
Yeah, that will be part of it. I would think that would be part of that.
Well, actually, sign man is not specifically, to my knowledge, referred to in council's rules of procedure.
Okay, I would agree with that as well.
I can promise you both of you that when we have this meeting, I support you both of you. And I believe other council members do too. We've had a short conversation on this one before. So maybe when we really decide about the next agenda, assuming we need a couple of other council members to join in that opinion, I, I think it has to be a robust discussion.
Right, I would like for all of us to, because I know that we emailed everybody a copy of our rules of procedure and I would love for us to really go through it and make sure that it's still reliable, that we're all on the same page and actually, and that the public also understands what are those procedures.
It's very important to me that we have public transparency, Councilmember Brock, that the public can look up this information themselves rather than see a sign on the wall that arbitrarily decided there's not going to be signs in this council.
So is there a member of the council coming on this request in the part of Sissy and Link to have this discussion? It would be on Archer Keith.
I don't have a problem with having a discussion of rules of procedure. My concern is that when we do have rules of procedure, we follow them.
Yeah, I'm also fine with discussing. There's always opportunities to consider changing. We have since the day I first took office over two years ago. We've had rules and procedures. They've worked very well. We've had the 15-minute public time period limitation in the rules and procedures for the last two years and four or five months that I've been involved. We added a public comment period afterwards, a number of months later, which I think is a good thing. I don't believe at that point in time we had clarified the 15-minute time period. I think we just altered an assumption that people in the past have never abused it. There was always polite interchange. And, but if we need to start being more specific on those things, so then that's what we have to do.
Yes, I think it's fine, but it's important that we can discuss them. Many times, quite often, that we don't, haven't used the entire 15 minutes. Many times that there haven't been that many comments throughout the years normally. So I think it's just fine to discuss it at the next meeting.
That'd be all right. Discussing that at the next meeting. I also agree with Ms. Kidd that in the past, we have not had the public comment period that we have right now. And I feel that changing times require us to look at that and reconsider what those rules are.
I know this question has come up more than Archer Keith. I saw it with some members of the staff, including that one, so would be what they're today. Because I was managing a council in 2010 and for some care of the time, I even called on this public, on the same sheet that someone that was just sitting outside the council. The council was sure that there was 15 minutes moving on the floor. We tried to discover what was on there or came off of there. And I'm not sure we have quite concluded. If Jennifer can, but I know that it was there. I've seen it many more times than not. So to those of you who may be confused about this, including some of us here, we don't know how it fell off the page. It did, but we need to trust me that, and others will certainly concur. During the moment when these guys and myself, that term, that 15 minutes, was written clearly, delineating this period. So we are not doing something that had not preceded us. Something I was accustomed to is our rules of procedure here.
Mr. Mayor, other than the background information of the rules of procedure themselves, is there any additional information that would be helpful to that council discussion that staff could provide?
I would like to know how the Robert's Rules of Order intertwined over our council's rules of procedure.
And I guess also would like to find out exactly where it's written about the signs in council chambers.
Any specific language approved by council regarding signs within council chambers would be appreciated. To my knowledge, which I have repeatedly asked, I have been provided nothing by staff other than a court case stated from a state attorney or another city. I don't think we need to go against our people and take it to court about these signs. We don't want discussion here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on that. We have actually been emailed a couple of times from the city attorney of the specifics of the latitude that we have as a council. We can allow signs, we cannot allow signs. It's up to the council. And that's okay on the state level too. It's not like we've been completely blind. You, in fact, were one of the members that wrote an email to the city attorney asking, and he responded to all of us. So I would say that that's not accurate to be saying the contrary.
Actually, to summarize what the attorney said, it's a council action. It's not a mayor action. It's not a deputy mayor action. It's council action. I'm asking for a specific council language, in this case.
I think some of the.
That's what we're going to do next week.
I think some of the lack of clarification in there is that exactly how it's written and, you know, the difference of speech allowed within the council chambers versus outside of that. And that clarification would be probably really good so that everybody understands the difference in the allowable speech within council chambers.
And I think we all have to realize too that we can have rules and procedures. They've guided us very well for decades in the past, but it still boils down to, you know, some common courtesies. You know, to see a sign waving up during the chief's retirement ceremony, I thought was completely disrespectful. And if you want to hold signs up, if you want to put them on your cars, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, that's fine, please. But I think that, you know, just a little common courtesy for other people involved in the meetings would be very appropriate.
And maybe that's some of the things we can spell out or some of the things that can be spelled out so that the folks can take a look and see, hey, here's the rules and here's what the suggestions. So I think that would be appropriate to have.
May I say, does that conversation forge enough information?
That is helpful, thank you.
All right, we will proceed then to item E, consent agenda. If each of you had an opportunity, hopefully have time to review that. Does everybody want something going for me that consent agenda from your.
Sir, I would like to briefly discuss the planning commission appointment. Just so that we can, as the council, just I would like to name the members, the new members.
Okay, yes, I think we do that now.
I have a question, like number E3, am I got it?
E3, you said?
E3, yes.
Mr. Mayor, as a reminder, council can ask questions without pulling things off the consent agenda.
I don't mean to pull it off the consent agenda. But I would like as a courtesy to name the new members without pulling off the consent agenda.
Okay, let me do this. Let me read one through. We're going to pull three for a moment. I'm going to read one, two, four, and five. Then I'm going to go back to three and then to six. And then we'll go back to six and then we'll have a chance to talk a little bit about the other. So with that then, I'll read consent agenda in sort of two parts here. City council council minutes of February 2nd, 2016 and February 16th, 2016. Spanish approval list, February 6th, 2016 to February 19th, 2016 in the amount of $945,184.35. Lodging tax event grant awards. 2016, 2017 lodging tax advisory committee give her appointments. Sissy Brett wanted to talk a moment about perks.
Right on the line when it's full. I have E3 off, consent agenda back on the second layer. And that's also something we need to do for item. Okay, E6, because we need to identify whose terms.
So let's talk about that for just a moment before we proceed. Earlier this afternoon, it was an open session. We had a member then step forward and offer the services on the planning commission seats that need to be filled for a range of terms, remaining three years to one year. Just talk about that. We talked about that in the series. Let me just start us off. Got any questions?
No, I just.
Want to talk about who we did?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to add the names and the terms.
So we have considered those that step forward and appreciate your interest and willing us to serve. John Matthews, we have appointed three remaining years of an unexpired term expiring in 2019. John is a previous member of the planning commission on two separate occasions. He was great to experience that position. Drew Swob, to fill a appointment for two remaining years on an unexpired term expiring in 2018. Matt, excuse me, Elwin Gee and Matt Bailey each to, sorry, I got it back. And Matt Bailey to serve a two-year remaining years on the expired term in 2018. And lastly, Elwin Gee to serve a one-year remaining, unexpired term expiring in 2017. Again, all of these men are many great skill sets and gave him appreciation and interest. Might say what each of your thoughts are during that time you had.
Yes, thank you.
Can move the consent agenda. Brad, that three hundred and fifty.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
All those disagree.
Thank you.
You want to hold up by E3 immediately?
We can do that right now.
Mr. Mayor, so will the candidates, the new commissioners, planning commission, receive a notification and a letter of thanks and welcome from the council?
Okay, Brad, you asked that we go right to the parts of representation and verification commission representative.
Right, my concern was, I did, there were six applicants and there were two that were recommended. And I'm not having a problem with recommendation, but I received an information what the other applicants were. And I thought it would be helpful to begin that information. I feel like we're simply, the effect of the dark, not the other applicants. I was concerned about that.
Mr. Mayor, we'll make sure those appear in the council packet at the next meeting for council operation.
Okay. Do we need to hold up on the appointments still then? I don't know if there's a time frame involved. Corey, is there concern about time?
Yes, if I was, everything needs to be done by March meeting, the first meeting in March.
Okay, but I'd be happy to just get that information and don't want to hold up the process.
Also, I ain't quite sure what exactly you were requesting.
There were six applicants and only two were brought forward. And I didn't know what the other four were.
Okay.
And I just thought that it would have been helpful to have that information given to the council as well. I can just scan them in and you know the council after. Thank you.
So would you want us to go back and approve this section?
I believe that's what they requested.
Okay, so let's get approval on motion for it on item E3, parts of recognition and identification commission representative points. Is there a favor of that? Do you say aye?
We just.
I'm sorry, question.
So move, Ms. Rand?
Guess I attribute to your comments the motion.
And I'll send it to motion.
Yes, we moved the second that we approve this item E3. And the consent agenda, please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you. And with us to item H, your resolution is not required public carries to the resolution to afford and ratifying the declaration of emergency for water management there. I'm kind of unsure.
Right, a little background on this. Sunday afternoon, an eight-inch water line broke. And this was one of the two water lines that, distributed water lines that provide water to the 300 customers on the east side of Homewater Creek. We turned off that, we had two water lines that provided water to those residents. And we cleared emergencies since one was out of service because it broke, which then we only had one more water line to provide service. And we didn't want to run the risk of that breaking while repairing the one that had broken. Then if that second one had broken, we'd be out of water for days. So we cleared emergencies to get, meet the end of the construction and repair the broken water line. Started work on Monday. They will be tying in the water line tomorrow and completed on Friday. Goals completed Thursday and pass the water through and get it back from the service. Is there any questions?
The grassers? And right between that area for the last few days, I've been on a noticeable order. Is it related to the work on the water line?
Nothing I'm aware of, no. 11th and Cedar?
This was near the intersection of the truck route and Ring Drive.
No, it's not in that area. It's Truck Route and Ring Drive. So that's quite a distance from 11th and Cedar, which is much further up the hill.
Okay, oh, 11th and Cedar, I'm sorry, okay.
That's come by the pilings that they pulled out down there. They've got them stacked up, but the barn was rotting off the pilings. It's atrocious. I'm not sure.
That's a good move, yeah, that would be.
Okay. Actually, I'm seeing, I guess I'd relate it to the other water. Nice to see we have that.
Right, yeah, that, yeah. Exactly that.
I apologize for that. Sorry.
Any other questions?
Is that the same vintage of pipe that broke at the bottom of Cedar?
It's 60 years old. It was put in place in 1955. Well, the one at Ring Drive, yeah, it's not the same, but it's about 60 to 70 years old.
So is this foreseeable that it's going to be an ongoing issue?
Yeah, and this, the pipe that broke Sunday, if you can visualize the slope, it goes down one slope of Homewater Creek. It goes under the creek, back up the other side. The slope is about 45 degrees. It broke at the very top. You know, when it's on a slope that steep, you know, over time, there's going to be movement and it'd be cracked.
Anybody else want to? Can I read the resolution? Resolution of the city council, City of Los Angeles, Washington, affirming and ratifying the declaration of emergency. and ratifying the declaration of emergency, which by city manager, on February 23rd, 2016. Motion to approve.
No second.
The motion is being made in second and all those in favor of the resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
And post, thank you very much. And Greg, our thanks to your staff and your collection to get some quickly, direct to, to addresses and support these things.
They got their supply going on this Monday.
Uh, item H, I'm, I'm high on agenda, under consideration is the appointment of a board of ethics to review a complete resented, um.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a key to this time?
Yes. I, I do not want my opening thoughts on this to be misunderstood.
Mr. Mayor and council, I can provide a staff report if that's helpful.
Yeah, and, well, let's do that first.
Mr. Mayor, on February 19th, staff received a second ethical complaint regarding, uh, procedures of a February 2nd meeting, uh, in accordance with Port Angeles Municipal Code Section 2.78. Uh, it is required that council appoint a board of ethics to review that second complaint. Uh, council essentially has two options. Uh, one option would be to select from the ethics committee pool, uh, some new members to consider that second complaint. As an alternative, uh, considering it is relative to the same council meeting with a very similar complaint, council could move forward, uh, asking the same three members they appointed at the last meeting, uh, to also act on the second complaint simultaneously. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Um, I guess, um, when I was going through this, I thought that because there are two different ethics complaints, it might be better to separate them. I mean, I, I can see why it would make sense for the whole committee to meet and deal with both of them, but, um, I just, um, I guess when I went to the ranking, I went ahead and tried to pick the folks that were not on that first committee to make sure that there's a second committee, just to give this one a fresh look. But I don't know if that's better or not. I'm happy to go either way with that one.
Any other comments? I did, Mr. Mayor, I'm just waiting to go to you. Is there? Yes.
I'd actually support that idea of, of an entirely new board makeup. These folks have, folks are added for just such an occasion and I, it would be a burden to place two, two different investigations on, on the same folks. So we've got the manpower or woman power, so I would again support for engine out giving a new three on this additional board.
So, councilman and mayor, we'll see your career. How much would you, how do you think of this?
Now, in my opinion, it's, uh, I'm still going to pick the same three individuals that I chose before. Um, I believe they're related, uh, issues when I read through both of the complaints. I understand also the issue that allowing, uh, new ideas and new thoughts about it by having two separate groups, so I'm kind of a little, uh, tossed up on this at the moment. But I would, in my opinion, I would probably come close to picking the same people that I picked before.
If I understood the suggestion is that we wouldn't be able to have Mr. Minor, uh, Mr. Prince and, um, was that the matter? I wouldn't, the other person, on the list, then we'd be picking from other people on the list. I don't think you'd have the confusion of same people necessarily. Um, I mean, I can see the merits of having three different people doing it since this committee hasn't been used before. It'd be helpful to have more people involved to see how it works. On the other hand, if the issues aren't related in one committee, says one thing, says that they could be a little bit, what's going on. So I, I don't have a problem with keeping the all three of the existing ones or picking three new ones, I think. The ethics board should make their findings pretty independently, so.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I would welcome the set of three new eyes on this and following up on council member, uh, Collins' comments, this is all about an ethics violation about what we have on file for how we're supposed to act. And if six set of eyes come up with two different findings, I actually think that would help us grow to figure out what the hell's wrong with our ethics requirements. I, I think we can make this into a learning situation for all, everyone involved. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd really welcome your input for the three more sets of eyes would just have an extent that maybe we need to go back and look at this, uh, this, this ethics, uh, that's on file. So, you know, I would hope, again, yeah, that all six do come up with the same findings, yet if we do have a problem, I think it's going to be a tool we can use to fix what we have. It seems to be one of the very few rules that we have as a council that we're supposed to look under.
Well, you ask, need to share your thoughts and we'd be happy to do that. Um, I know when we went through this process recently, um, and because we have, we have a pool of some fine men and women, you know, I have considerable experience, um, I'd try to share and kind of sort of endeavor in a way. I think either way, we can't go wrong. To use the, the three that have been in one place at one time and they can review both cases, I see some immediacy and some logic in that process. I mean, they're a good man and a woman. Uh, having said that, I also know that we have a pool of, uh, individuals with experience who've offered their services in studies like this and to serve on board. I think we ought to perhaps take advantage of that resource and, uh, and, and show our respect for their willingness to serve and respect their judgments as they proceed. So I guess if I came down to pusher versus shop here, I'd probably, uh, consider using the three additional individuals. I can start with that. I, I take it that would, I'm following track in this and I've seen it even revving the position that somebody can keep in track of this and more intent on listening to what you're saying and putting check marks on a piece of paper here.
So, Mr. Mayor, based on what we've heard, the next step would be for council to go through and name their three additional. Based, based on what we've heard from the council session so far, we would now have council go through and name their additional three representatives, ensuring that there is a judicial and municipal representative incorporated and each of their three.
Can we just do that and give us a couple of suspicious things here?
Good stuff. Uh, let us know which three we should cross off our board of ethics pool.
So, Mr. Mayor, the three that were selected at the last meeting were Grant Minor, Danetta Rudden, and Frank Prince. And the full list is on page I, three of your packet.
Do you want us to give you three names for each of those lists or just the top one? Would that be easiest?
It would be the last time was the top three, um, but we are, it sounds like council wants to eliminate three of the choices.
What do you mean?
Okay, uh, my main thought is that's just the top one for each category.
Okay, great. So Brad, do you want to start? You have a question?
Uh, for judicial, I would support, uh, Ken Williams.
I also, uh, I as well.
Ken Williams?
Yep, that was my choice.
Oh.
For municipal, I was for Edwards Hole.
I'm going to go with Jerry Dean.
Okay, oh, sorry, I mean, uh, we.
Where are the municipal experience?
Um, that would be, I am, I am, I agree. I put down Diana, I, I, I play it so. I put down the, uh, definitely Diana, what's her?
No, you can pick someone else. You can't.
Well, that's right, my favorite, Brian. Um, Sol Hall would be, excuse me, Sol Hall would be. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Edwards Hole.
I'd go with Jerry Dean.
And I was going with Dean as well.
Okay, for the independent, I will go back with Edwards Hole.
Let's get that in here.
For the, for the one that's, this kind of, I would go with Edwards Hole.
Citizen of the nation.
That's for municipal, I thought.
Right, but they selected Jerry Dean for municipal.
Right, but I thought we were saying the three categories.
No, I think you can vote for anyone for the, that one.
That's right, all right, um.
I think they have a total of that most current.
I'm going to go with William Yaka.
I as well.
And I'm going with Yaka as well.
Yep, me too.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe, uh, we have Jerry, sorry, judicial is Ken Williams, uh, municipal is Jerry Dean, and independent would be Yaka. So, Mr. Mayor, we would need a motion to confirm.
And would you approve this?
Second that.
Okay, and motion consecutive to, uh, Kenneth Williams, Jerry Dean, and William Yaka to serve on this board of ethics, uh, reviewing the claims presented. All those in favor in the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And post, huh? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. So, could someone find the, are two missing council members and we'll get back to the beginning. Okay, we are now at item J, finance on our agenda. First being the interlocal agreement for emergency dispatch services between the city of Port Angeles and Jefferson County.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. What do you have before you tonight is an interlocal agreement between the city of Port Angeles and Jefferson County's dispatch center known as Jeff Conne. It is, I think, a logical first step, but also admittedly a baby step in the direction of full regionalization of 911 emergency dispatch on the Olympic Peninsula. Uh, before I get rolling here, I'd like to introduce to you Steve Ronberg, who's in the front row down there. Steve is the, uh, manager of the 911 center here in Colorado County, uh, that works as a division of the Port Angeles Police Department. See that to Steve's right, is former Penn Comp employee, but currently, uh, the director of 911 services in Jefferson County, Carl Hatton. And to Carl's right is Joe Knoll, uh, who is a member of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, uh, but is here tonight in his capacity as chair of Jefferson County 911 Advisory Board. So you may recall that, uh, in August of 2015, we brought a resolution to our council that council didn't need pass, uh, that authorized me to look, uh, further into the full regionalization of 911 dispatch services on the peninsula. Carl, if you want to step up to the podium there, I think we've got a chance to speak. From my, from my perspective, um, regionalization is the future of dispatch. The cost of the technology, the costs and training of staff necessary to handle centers is enormous, uh, and I think there's potential huge benefit from a financial perspective if we think long-term in the eventual, eventual regionalization of dispatch centers on the peninsula. In the immediate, uh, future, however, what I really think we're looking at, uh, is that joining at an administrative level and moving incrementally forward for a full regionalization allows us to create a dispatch environment that is far more survivable than the event of a natural disaster, for example, uh, but will also allow us to provide much better service for our emergency responders and ultimately to the citizens of both our counties and clients that we serve. Uh, so what I'd like to do, uh, is let Carl speak to you about, uh, his vision of, of where he sees us going over the next few years, because certainly this is a multi-year project. Uh, the year of the night, uh, is intended to appoint Carl as the, uh, regional director of 911 services overseeing both dispatch centers in Jefferson and Colorado Counties, uh, with a mandate, uh, to further explore full regionalization. So go ahead, Carl, if you'd like to make some comments.
Well, thank you. Um, I didn't prepare a speech or anything tonight, but, um, uh, first I want to just briefly say, uh, congratulations, Terry. Um, it was a pleasure working for you as a chief, like being my chief for many years and, um, good luck in your endeavors moving forward. So I just wanted to briefly say that. Um, the ILA that's in front of you is, uh, the last piece of work that all the political entities of Jefferson County and Colorado County have been working together to try to develop. Um, it's received full support from my advisory board, my user agencies, as well as the city council of Port Townsend. Um, it is the first step towards a potential regionalization. It's not a foregone conclusion that that's where we're going to go, uh, but it is a possibility. Um, and we recognize that the only way we're going to start making progress and determine if that's really the direction we should go is by making this first step. So I recognize, and I think we all recognize, this is an interim position, it's not a, uh, intended to be a forever position. It would be illogical to have one person splitting half-time duties between two centers across, uh, such a large geographical area. Uh, but for a temporary solution for the next probably two to three years, maybe even as many as five years, depending on direction that your body gives us, as well as our user agencies and your counterparts in Jefferson County, uh, gives us that opportunity to start moving those ideas forward. And so we have a regionalization study that's been put out, um, both, uh, both sides, both counties have both seen that and see that there are several options that we can be looking at. Um, my personal opinion, based on that study and based on looking across the state and some other agencies across the, uh, country, is that our full regionalization is probably the solution that's going to be the best solution long-term. However, that being said, if we take these things in small steps, because it is a huge undertaking, there's many components to it, um, that are going to be needed to be studied. We have to have political agreement from two separate counties on how we move forward so that we're moving together as a, as a unified body, uh, to make that happen. And so, um, I am grateful for the opportunity to speak in front of you and, uh, to help present this ILA and, uh, hope for your support and continue moving forward. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Um, I, I don't have questions, but I, I think it's, this is great. Um, I appreciate this regionalization and I know that.
I appreciate this regionalization, and I know that that kind of cooperative working together is really wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to echo that. This shows some vision, forward thinking, and that it shows that by working together we can actually create a best or better system and more greater efficiency and safety for both counties. So I'm, I'm really very pleased to see us beginning that, that process. I appreciate Terry Gallagher having that vision and foresight to look at the future and for you, and I, I think this is really wonderful for our community, because public safety is number one, and I think we're moving in that direction, so thank you.
Thank you.
Terry?
No, I just wanted to agree to the death of the report that was provided, I think, at the last meeting. There's many ways for regionalization to occur. I mean, most commonly people think of that as a single dispatch center built somewhere that serves both counties, but there's other models that are available, models that do exist in other parts of the country. And again, I like what Carl said, it's a hugely political endeavor, but we have to start somewhere. I think it's the right thing to do, I think this is the right first step, and I think Carl is the right person to drive the train as we try to move forward. And so I'm asking capital support tonight. Public safety advisory board here in Port Angeles has endorsed this proposal, as the PennCom advisory board, or excuse me, the Jeff Con advisory board, and who am I forgetting, Carl?
I guess I would have, I would have a question for, for either one of you. Is there a, is there a comparable model, or are there other comparable models in our state and the regions that give us some reference points and experience?
There are some. Sooton and Whitman County have conjoined center, as well as Franklin and Douglas. They've all encountered this. What's that? Oh, Shalane and Douglas, thank you. Steve keeps me straight, I'm glad he's not leaving, so that's important. We also look at across the country, there's several combined centers, some of them actually combine dispatch centers with two states that are part of the same center. And there's a lot of lessons learned, there's a lot of things that I look at as I look at those centers and how they've incorporated, how they've decided to use what their governance model is, all those kinds of discussions need to happen, and how you merge two workforces together. So there's a lot of lessons learned out there, and my hope is that how, whatever direction we politically and as a community decide we want to take this, that we can take those lessons learned from those agencies and make it as seamless as possible and as painless as possible. Change is always challenging and always difficult, but I think with the right people behind it and the right information, I think we can move that forward.
Chief Gallagher, maybe I missed it, but the county commissioners or Palm County sheriffs, could you speak to them, their involvement? What I'm understanding at this point is that the city of Port Angeles is actually the tip of the spear on this agreement? Can someone speak to that?
The city of, the city of Port Angeles manages PennCom, the Peninsula Communications and 911 Center. We serve a 17 agencies, but PennCom, the 911 Center in Palm County is a division of the Port Angeles Police Department that I'm responsible for. The county under, Palm County Sheriff's Department, for example, is a user agency of PennCom. Management decisions that are made in respect to PennCom are made by me with, under certain cases, permission from or approval from the city council. PennCom has an advisory board, not a governing board. We run all issues past them and seek their approval, but technically we don't need their approval in order for us to make decisions about how we want to manage the dispatch center.
Great, I appreciate that. Further explanation, thank you.
All right, well, I'm going to move to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement for emergency dispatch administrative services between the city of Port Angeles and Jeffco, appointing Carl Hatton as regional emergency communications director, so that further exploration of the concept of 911 center regionalization can continue. Senator?
The room is seconded, is there further discussion before I make a comment and ask for approval? I think everybody on the council, I have personally had several occasions to go into the PennCom center here. It's fascinating, but what really strikes me every time I've been there is that, that at any given moment, at any given time in the day, 247, 265, a life may be at risk or saved, more often than not thankfully saved, as a result of what goes on in that city and center. It's a busy place, it's a, Steve Ronberg, Sissy Forrest, and as Carl can too, attest to a sense of urgency that, but what really drives my mind is that to know that those living ones who are there are extraordinary individuals. Honestly.
Yes, they are.
Thank you. And anything that can further their capacity to bring people together to save another person is fine. I think this is the kind of action, you know, when it goes on, I want to attempt that very thing. Thank you, all of you who do that, everyone, you see when they have your eye.
I just wanted to mention, there's no more important founder in Port Angeles than 911, so thank you.
Okay, any further comments? With that said, motion has been made in second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we know that our next item has to do with harbor cleanup, and since I did work there, the Lord of Palm tribe, and they are one of the proponents of some of this, I will, excuse myself, go to the next discussion.
Do you want to retrieve your report? Okay, that's item J 12.
Sure, helpful.
On my pages to a change. We just had a second statement. And the elder is going to be speaking twice as soon.
I'll take it. We know that Nathan is very well educated on that too, and so he may have some additional comments to make. But this is the proposal to renew two contracts we have that have to do with the harbor cleanup. One is for specialized legal services that is required for that, and the other one, though, is for the technical services, that is the scientific stuff, the sampling and the analysis that's required for the harbor cleanup. And many of you will remember that in 2012, the Department of Ecology did a study of Port Angeles Harbor, and as a result of that, they found that there was contamination that needed to be remediated, and they named several entities as potentially liable parties. And that's the code word for people who are potentially legally liable for the cleanup of the harbor. And the city and the port are two of those entities. Three other of those entities are Georgia Pacific, Nippon, and Merrill Ring. And those five in 2012 proposed to join together to negotiate with the Department of Ecology an efficient and effective cleanup of the harbor. And at that time, there was a general recognition of the benefits of cleanup. It's good to have a clean harbor, and people could recognize that. At the same time, the council and a lot of the public were very skeptical about the process, and the primary reason for that was the very visible example of the Nippon process, which had then gone on for well over a decade without much visible progress and was still going on, and today, to a matter of fact, still is going on. So the proposal that was brought forward to council back in 2012 was to join with the four other entities. We could split the costs and do a very effective cleanup that would be a lasting cleanup and would be cost effective for the community. The council went ahead with that and adopted that idea, joined with the other five on a couple of conditions. One was that we indeed follow the principle that it be an effective cleanup, and also that this be brought back to the council periodically, so that you could periodically check on the progress, see how we were doing, and get updates. So this is one of those occasions. We have come to a point in the process where we need to now expand some of the scope of work for both the legal consultant and for the technical consultant. We are just at the point of finishing up the process that was begun in 2012. So we've done a lot of work, we want to get that finished. But also over the next couple of years now, there are some new things, new projects that need to be done, new, new tasks that have to be addressed, that we didn't consider in 2012. And so those are also covered in, in these agreements. So if you look at the agreements, they're in your packet, you're wanting, that each one of them has a very detailed scope list of things that are going to be covered over the next two years, potentially going to be covered. And these agreements provide a mechanism for funding them. Now, one of the things that changed since 2012, and very much to our favor, is that in 2012, we didn't have any money to pay for this. So we have, the money then had to come out of other places. Since then, we have been successful in making claims against some of our prior insurance companies, some of the city's prior insurance companies. And as a result of that, we have been able to have reimbursement for almost all of the technical claims and for most, but not all of the legal claims. So actually, when you look at the numbers here, what we're looking at is authorization for the city to pay these amounts upfront, knowing that we will be reimbursed almost 100% for the technical services and about 60% for the legal services. So that's a change, much better, into a much better financial situation than we were in, in 2012 when this began. So that is the purpose of these tonight. I know there's a lot, lot more detail that you can read to the packet, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and again, if Nathan has anything to add, I would welcome his input too.
Mr. Mayor, I just would add that I believe the example attorney floor was referencing was the Rainier cleanup, just for clarification on the record.
You're in terms of council, would you have the opportunity to ask any questions, or are two experts over there?
Nathan, I don't know which department, but I guess as acting city manager, I'll start with you. This is getting into our budget, so would a super majority be needed to adopt this? I defer that to our chief financial officer.
You know, because we're dealing with a vast majority of money that's used and paid for this comes from insurance reimbursement, those are new monies, so therefore it's a simple majority that would authorize this, where the city funds that come from this come from part of the money that was collected when council a couple of years ago now adopted a utility surcharge that then expired when council ended it early, so that provides those monies, and those are, those are available as well.
As well, I'd like to point out for the audience, looks like we're actually netting money, we're gonna, we're gonna have a budget increase of basically 218,000, but we're in turn gonna have 200 and almost 72,000 coming in, so we are netting money, so, but I just want to be clear on a super majority needed. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to compliment staff on handling this and reimbursements that we can get. I'm so grateful that it's, that we're actually getting them, so thank you for the work on this.
So Mr. Mayor, I think a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into the attached third amendment to the agreement with Cascadia Lot and the fifth amendment to the professional services agreement with Interbook Consulting, Inc.
Sorry.
Pardon?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
And to make minor modifications to the agreements if necessary.
No, I'll say. The room is seconded, or seconded in motion. Any interest? There'd be, I just recommendation to proceed, all those in favor of the motion, say it, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in this, thank you. We are at council reports, start.
Sissy, back down.
Sissy, bro.
Sissy.
Oh, yeah, well, you're probably doing it.
Come on, babe.
Sissy, thank you for your tolerance, there is a. Okay, we are at city council reports. Will you help, I'll just start you.
All right, I went to the NOTC, the North Olympic Development Council meeting, and it was held in Fort Jordan, and they are taking over that park, and they're making it into this amazing place that it's got some woodworking classes, they've got some art classes, they've got all sorts of different things happening. So I know it's in Fort Houston. It took a lot of collaboration from Peninsula College, from the park folks, from the different businesses, and it was a really great collaborative work. So I would hope that in the future we can do something like that here, but if you haven't had a chance to go down to Fort Jordan and take a look at what they're doing, it's really exciting. They have, you know, if you've never worked with wood and tools, they have these 12-week courses. I was so tempted to say, come on, sign up? So they're teaching people how to make furniture, the old-fashioned way, how to use wood. It's just really, really a wonderful program, so. That's my call.
On Friday, I attended the Palm County Timber Advisory Council. That is, that's an undertaking that, that's going to be a long process, I think, I realize that it's for a year, but there is a lot of information for those folks to go through. They're still in the preliminary stages of that, and I'm hoping that we can get, moving forward with some productive discussion. There's such a vast array of people representing on that council that have different agendas, and hoping that we can get, moving along to really what is down to the core of what we're trying to achieve. It was a lot of good information from the DNR, and we'll have speakers again with the DNR next month.
Yeah, may I just, in reference, I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve and hope that I can prove to you, be a discussion to you. Thank you.
I just wanted to give a brief report on the William Shore Pool District. Council member Collins is the chair of that, and we attend monthly meetings, and I really don't report, that the pool is thriving and doing great since Sark closed down. They have worked so hard to accommodate those swimmers as well. We have a very hardworking staff. We hope in the future to be able to expand the pool because the community loves it, the community needs it. And I received my property tax bill in the mail very recently, and I took a look at the categories, and it's such a tiny amount that. So our pool district is just doing themselves, so I'm giving a good report.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to report that on Saturday, I was privileged to, along with you, Mr. Mayor, and Cory Dilica, to attend a cleanup function coordinated by P A Can, the civil group. If you had an opportunity to drive by Civic Field along Sixth Street, excuse me, Chain Park, along Seventh Street, that's actually Sixth, that borders on the north side of the park. And you could see all the work that was done, clearing the shrub and brush and things like that. There was estimated to be about 70 volunteers that showed up. It was just amazing, the energy that these folks, both young and old, had for hauling the shrub out and clearing up debris. They just did a wonderful job, and my hat's off to them.
I'd like to report tonight something that's near and dear to my heart, and I think it's gonna be near and dear to a few others when I report on this. For the past 19 years, the city of Port Angeles has contributed to the Lincoln Park trout, kids trout fishing every year. And they give out these fishing poles to these kids that catch a course, these are big planted trout. My kids are older, but I think 18, 19 years ago, and probably one of the first years they started, my kids participated in that. And now it's the new generation that's participating. But I've got some bad news to report, to not only council, but the people here tonight and the audience. We've cut the funding for this. And it's $400 annually for this group to buy the fish and put in the pond, let the kids catch them, and then hand out the street fishermen with them. I really think that as a youngster, that gets the kid that pointed in the right direction. I caught the fever myself when I was that age, and it's led me to city council. I don't know if that's such a good point to go on, but it's a good thing. Get your kids, it's an outward thing. This would be year number 20 that the city contributed to this group. John Proctor, he's the president of Olympic Peninsula Live Fishers. It's another civic group that does civic stuff. This time, they plant the trout that these kids catch. So I would actually ask that council, that we bring up this under our next agenda, for helping this derby out for these kids. We're all about seeming to be about kids in our community. I've got firsthand knowledge of this, and I bet you 99% of everyone here also has firsthand experience of being there and participating, sometimes grandkids, sometimes. I don't want to see this go away. So again, I ask that we bring this up during our next council meeting. I know we went and dug under rocks for that money for the E B C, and I'd even like to tip over that rock and find this money for the Olympic Peninsula Live Fishers. Thank you.
I'd like to report that I had the honor of introducing Horrible Campbell to the Daughters of American Revolution for an award for conservation in our community. It was a well-served award, and it was a great afternoon, and it was nice to see Horrible Reddick's.
I'd like to report that I had the honor of introducing Horrible Campbell to the Daughters of American Revolution for an award for conservation in our community. It was a well-served award, and it was a great afternoon, and it was nice to see Horrible Reddick's. I'd like to report also on Cloud County Transit Award. Mr. Downey, I serve on that, and it, like the school district, is doing well.
Yes, it is. Okay. Again, I mentioned our participation at the Source Project at Chain Park. It was an extraordinary experience. I'm not familiar with just going the north side of Chain Park. Cory can say this better than I can, but we made a pledge when that wonderful children's play area was installed. We made a pledge to the neighbors and the parents of the children that would be using that facility, that they would have the ability to see through that screen of trees. And I wish and pray that they would have a better view and they would see where their children were safely playing down that area. And that what was accomplished on Saturday was focused on that pledge to make it a safe and delightful place, which is. Cory, did you care?
Sure, I can talk about that. We put in the Chain Park later on one of the things that we worked and served, was the area of metal and the location of the trees and the brush in there. And so we had been trying to get work parties for the last few years to do that, and we've had two that just kind of failed. We had a group that came to us, it was actually our town, it's a subset of, I think, the Cloud County Criminal Watch. And at last count, when I talked to Anthony today, they counted over 100 people at that work party.
Thanks for clarifying that. What's our town?
It's our town.
P A Can is doing a lot of other good stuff.
Correct.
Not to get the two mixed up. Thanks.
It was a great experience. I really enjoyed being there. I had the opportunity, and this is quite a day, each of us in some time or another, but I had the opportunity especially to meet with our representative Derek Kilber, advocacy of this, we had a swim recently, just to share materials I hadn't already, that was a positive visit. Somebody who almost ought to be popular, that Derek grew up here, I've had the privilege of knowing the Kilber family for many years. I couldn't remember Derek being in my living room, he was not, couldn't reach the top of this, I don't think. But it was a great experience. It was a privilege I cherish as a position I currently hold to, to meet with our leadership in the Congress, serving as well as Derek does. Lastly, another unique opportunity we never had, never dreamed thirty years ago, nor would it my wife dreamed, that I was able to share with her and Martha Olympic Library folks last week. You recall that for quite a number of years, and I can speak to this, but we recently closed our wall in the Martha Olympic Library, main library building. It was a bond issue, and we, and many of you, have contributed to that building, and it serves and continues to service very well. But as a privilege of going out there with people of property transfer, people was prepared and represented that to transfer that property is now in control and administratively and every other way, running the day-to-day activities out there. My wife was an employee with outreach services within the Martha Olympic Library for over 30 years, and she joined me, and that was kind of a creative idea in itself. Just sitting there signing up the document that your parents were saying, no longer debt service to the city, it's off of our shoulders, and now in custody as it belongs with the, one of the trustees and others with the library and their staff. It was kind of fun to be up there and see that history take place, to be a part of it. I am L, Information City Manager, our acting city manager.
Mr. Mayor, council, you do have before you two reports in section L for council's review. Additionally, I would like to note that on March 15th, staff has scheduled council's annual training for the Public Meetings Act, Public Records, Ethics, Roles and Responsibilities of Council Members. It's very important that you get back to Jennifer Venoclozen. If you are unable to attend, beginning at 4:30 on March 15th, that session, we would need to reschedule if any one of the council members is unable to attend at that time. So again, please get back to Jennifer just to confirm your ability to attend.
I can hear the timing.
4:30 PM to 6:00 PM on March 15th, just before the regularly scheduled council meeting on March 15th. And that is it for information.
I'm picturing that we'll be all ready to answer your questions, they're moving, they're in us. There is a second public conference, plus your meeting. There are some names that were individuals, I should say, that were unable to have the chance in the first round, and there's others that have expressed their interest in the committee to the podium. So we will be, again, as we already will be, 15 minutes. We have first on that list that I'd like to continue is Michael Sutton. Please, again, state your name and address.
My name is Michael Sutton. My address is 3322 Upper Lake. Thank you, mayor and council, for giving us the opportunity to speak there. I do appreciate it, and I really do appreciate the job that you guys do. I wouldn't want it. I know it's a lot of responsibility. I can see how you upset a lot of people both ways in a lot of circumstances. The circumstance, all right, however, the town's been clear since the 70s or whatever. We never voted for it ever. We never did. You guys did 10 years ago, not you guys, maybe personally, but at last council, and now you're doing it again. I'm just asking you, please, just relent. Like, we all, I don't know. I know I've sinned against others, I've made mistakes. I feel like you are singing against us. Just repent of that. And I mean, I can't speak for everybody, me myself, you know, with a few signs here, you know. This isn't a personal attack, it's an attack against what you're doing. You're attacking and opposing the will of the people, and that can't be respected and can't be tolerated, and you really do need to step down if you can do your job and represent us. It's pretty simple to me. I don't understand why it's an issue. Just represent us, please. Relent. Thank you.
Merrily Smith.
I may have done the list this time. Merrily Smith, P O Bot Stuporn, and Nancy Corianis. What I want to talk about is our constitution. Our constitution protects the ability of all citizens to speak their mind about matters of public concern, even if what they have to say is not what the government wants to hear. This was decided in a landmark decision by the Supreme Court, New York Times versus Sullivan in 1964, and this was regarding the actual malice step of public comment. The court said, "Our constitution reflects a profound national commitment to the principle that a debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." Verbal attacks may be warranted. Part of the bargaining in laying down arms and creating a civil society is that the people have retained their rights to verbally attack public officials who may be in the wrong. People retain the right to wound with words in exchange for giving up their right to wound with weapons. The very essence of the First Amendment speech protecting us is to verbally humiliate public officials into complying with the law. In the journals of the Continental Congress, which is compiled by noted historian Chauncey Ford Worthington, which by the way is my great-great-great-grandfather's nephew, he quoted our founding fathers as saying, "Oppressive officers are shamed or intimidated into honorable and just modes of conducting affairs." In the United States, we possess the right to political attack. We do. What it comes down to is, we, the people, have very limited forms to speak. We vote, and we speak, and we write letters. Justice Hugo Black once wrote in part, "The assumption that the respect for judiciary can be won by shielding judges from published criticism wrongly phrases the character of the American public opinion. For it is a prized American privilege to speak one's mind, although not always with perfect good taste. On all public institutions and enforced silence, however limited, sullies the name of preserving the dignity of the bench. It would probably engender resentment, suspicion, and contempt much more than it would enhance respect." You're saying, "Don't silence us," and that's what you basically tried to do. Even your municipal research services center advises against this. So on 1-5 and 1-19, Mr. Downey, you chided us. You scolded us as if we were children. That wasn't acceptable, and I've prepared an ethics complaint against you that I'm delivering for the board. Thank you.
Jim Borje, 313 North Ridge V Drive, Port Angeles, Washington. I'd like to start by reading some details from one of the recent shipments from J.R. Simplot Agribusinesses, where Port Angeles gets some of this hydrofluoric acid. Let's see, section three, composition information on ingredients. Hazard is 25% hydrofluoric acid. Section four, first aid measures. Ingestion, now obviously this is the composition itself, not what we're getting diluted in our water, nevertheless, I think it's relevant. First aid measures, ingestion, consult a physician immediately, in all cases, seek medical treatment. Section 12, ecological information. No data available. Disposal considerations, waste disposal procedures. Neutralized waste may be disposed of in an approved landfill. Consult the state and local environmental for appropriate facilities. Transport information, proper shipping. Corrosive materials. Disclaimer, in nice small print at the very end of this document. This information relates to the specific material designated and may not be valid for such material used in combination with any other materials or in any process. Such information is, to the best of our knowledge and belief, accurate and reliable as of the date compiled. However, no representation, warranty, or guarantee is made as to its accuracy, reliability, or completeness. No warranty of marketability, fitness for any particular purpose, or any other warranty expressed or implied is made concerning the information herein provided. It is the user's responsibility to satisfy himself as to the suitability and completeness of such information for his own particular use. We do not accept liability for any loss or damage that may occur from the use of this information, nor do we offer warranty against patent infringement." This made me think of a recent quote I heard from Justice, recently deceased Justice Anton Scalia. "I attack ideas, not people. Some wonderful people have terrible ideas. The idea to fornade our water with chemicals for people we don't know with ingredients that aren't guaranteed, with the supplier being unwilling to accept any responsibilities for the effects, flies in the face of reason. This must not, cannot, and will not be the legacy we leave to future generations." This must not, cannot, and will not be the legacy we leave to future generations. Inundating ourselves with toxic chemicals, our children, grandchildren, drinking, bathing, cooking, growing food, et cetera, is just plain madness. Let's break it down to simple logic. Should we be willing to take the risks from dangerous chemicals in one of our most precious resources, water, the essence of life, to risk everyone's well-being? Logic and caution has to tell us a resounding no. I'm imploring even the supporters of this adequate policy to rethink this and change their minds for the safety of all of us. Briefly, I'm sorry I'm going over. This brings to mind a recent Board of Health meeting that many of you may not be aware of. At this meeting, the members discussed and voted on whether or not to endorse water fluoridation. This topic was not on the agenda, was not made public. So now we have ten people in our community recommending this policy for sixty thousand people. This is against what the majority of this county wants. It is unethical, immoral, and totally unacceptable. One of you needs to change your mind. Thank you.
I'm sorry, cannot read neither the name or other than one one four is part of the address of the most named on this list. Peter Ripley. Oh, Peter. Peter, my apologies.
Peter Ripley, one fourteen, six feet, a puppet, one oh two, Port Angeles. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm not going to talk about fluoridation. That may be a shock to everyone, but you know, I may have a liner at the end of this little speech. Today, I want to talk about something that happened to me personally on my little trip down the street when this is sunny, too, on my way to church services. Well, unfortunately, I had a little mishap with my wheelchair, and combined with wheelchair and a raining poncho I was wearing, and the darn thing got caught up underneath my, in front of my wheel, and cracky was, you know, digging in my neck, and I was bending down, and I was really in the fix. And thankfully, thank goodness, that a good neighbor and a few good cops and sheriff deputies were on hand to give me a hand. And no, and by jolly, I was completely shook back, but at the time, I was free from my little imprisonment. I was surrounded, completely, almost surrounded by police and sheriff deputies and E M Ts. And so, and that one neighbor person. I want to thank them all for a fine job well done, and I want to say my special thanks for thank you, and congratulations, Terry, you're a good buddy, and I think this guy deserves another round of applause, bringing him out. I know it's not normal for those of us of the media who gets the headlines. We write the headlines. And I jokingly told the, those around me, guys that are out there, I said, "Well, you know, it's not, it's not normal for local, for media types to get, to make headlines. We write the headlines, we write the stories." One of the E M Ts, "What's your protocol after ages?" "You gotta stay tuned." Anyway, I don't know. Anyway, at times, so, and I want to also thank the mayor for sending me a nice letter to go, "We need us to read on policy decisions like fluoridation, sir." But I do appreciate the kind letter that he sent me, and do well. Once again, I want to thank the sheriff department, the E M Ts, and the police department for helping me out with the jam. Thank you very much.
Sir, please introduce. Honorable Mayor, City Council. Please go to the podium, so you can hear your audience. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Chief Large. Our first president, Bill Clinton, I mean George Washington. What's your name? I didn't get you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm calling Jack Carlson, calling Jack's place, ten twelve East Second Street. Our first president, George Washington, prior to crossing the Potomac, lost every war, lost hundreds of thousands of troops, and as he entered a fight against the most powerful fighters, German fighters in the world, was blessed by God and inspiration and able to come and hit them without a loss of life. My ancestor, Kekonsa, blue jacket, well, she was Shisoni, some of him is Dance with Wolves, if you've seen the movie. They had a word for people that would terrorize and torture and hurt, it was Lasichia. I think that anybody here that wants to make a stand for fluoride should stand up so we can see them. Anyway. What's the problem? I have a deal for you. Anybody in here that believes in fluoride, I will bring two toothpaste next week, and you can eat the damn things. We'll see what the results are. Because a child, a little two-year-old child who's smart, pulls out the door, climbs up on the medicine cabinet, eats a tube of potato paste, dies. Thank you. By my cooperation, sir, you can't be one additional person. If you understand, come to the podium.
Seventy-five for U S eight street. This may sound stupid, but I gave permission to have one of those yellow black signs put on my property, and as soon as it got dark, it was gone in like half an hour. I keep on my front, my back lights and my living room light, it's between the bridges on Eighth Street, so it's a well-traveled place. And I don't think that there's a personal attack to any of you on the sign, it's more a group of people that said, "It's about the subject, it's about an issue." But I finally got another one, and again, it's not against you as a person, please don't think that. And it was gone in less than half an hour, and even left the nail sticks there. So I just thought that was kind of tacky and even childish. No, I don't think that's... And it is on the parking strip, which the city owns, I think, I'm pretty sure. So I nailed it to my house. But it's just a statement that we're all trying to make, but I did think it was tacky that someone's running by my front yard and pulling the signs up. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
That concludes our agenda this evening. I would like to say a motion to the mayor.
So much.
Second. Honorable Sir David Washington, you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.